Okay, but.
Maybe this is like.
It's for you.
Hey, AJ. You guys already.
Alright, we already got yours ready.
Alright, let's get started, folks. We'll say the plug.
So, about you first.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Alright, thank you. And we got everybody here tonight, so we definitely have a forum going for us. So, Brenton, was there anything on the regular agenda we needed to update, change, or modify, or anybody else?
Nope.
Anybody got any questions, otherwise we accept a motion to set the agenda?
Mr. Mayor, I think we have one more thing to take off. So, item. Eight B. And eight D.
Okay.
Any clarification of that? Let me say eighty-first Avenue, just so I can.
Nope, that's up by the church, east of the church.
Okay, that's the one east of the.
Church.
South of the school.
Okay, got it. Thanks.
He's in which one?
Second one.
Eighty-eight.
That's eight. That's where it's at.
Sorry.
Okay, anything else, guys, otherwise?
Motion to approve with set changes?
Second.
Okay. Brian made a motion, Dave did a second. Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Alright, motion carries. Consent agenda.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, Jim, the payment to. Another improvement for the roundabout, what is that, since there hasn't been any work?
It's just cleaning up the two thousand nineteen quantities. We're trying to get all of the two thousand nineteen quantities done, and then we don't have to worry about them when they finish in the spring.
So is that just?
We had a meeting before Christmas, and we went through, and there were some deviations between the, what we had and what they had and what the county had, so this was cleaning that up, and there were some quantities that we didn't have.
Okay.
Right in the middle of it, so.
Okay, how much approximately is left in on that?
As far as dollars or percent? I think five percent. Five percent. But they're like ninety-five percent complete. Basically, it's payment markings and some cleanup around behind the ditches and that.
Okay. Thanks, Mike.
And the front end.
Streetlights.
Streetlights.
Streetlights and elements is the, probably the most substantial things.
What?
The streetlights and elements is probably the most substantial.
And removing that one temporary light, it's not great.
No, I'm connected, I can get on.
Yeah, it's there just for you, Dave.
I know.
Okay.
Thank you.
Anybody else got any other questions, otherwise? John? Okay, accept the motion.
Some would.
Dave makes a motion, gonna get a second?
Second.
John does a second. Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Alright, approve the consent agenda. Council minutes from last time around. We have a chance to look at them.
I uploaded last night here on SharePoint.
I was looking for them.
Yeah, I just put them up here just recently, so.
Oh, here they are.
Yeah. There are a couple of updates, so. Might want to go off of SharePoint.
Okay, you guys, anybody? Any changes on there? Good? Don't accept the motion in the council minutes?
Well, should approve the minutes.
Second.
Brian? Okay, all in favor, say aye.
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 Alright, that's approved. Okay, public comment, anybody got anything you want to talk about tonight? Going once, going twice. Alright. You're up. With all the good news, right?
Always good news.
Always good news, I like that.
Evening, everybody. Have two things tonight. First of all, through the yearly report for the year twenty nineteen. You might have it, I'm not sure.
You should have that one on there.
Should just be called, I sent it as twenty nineteen.
Oh, here it is.
It'd be eight-seven.
Uh, so which one do you want to go through first?
We'll do the yearly report first, and then we'll do the month of January for last month.
Turn it off and turn it back on for a moment.
That's, usually works.
Get it.
Half, half the time.
Reboot, right?
Or never.
Stop your car, get out.
Yeah, that definitely never works. So let's go over the second page first, it's just a couple paragraphs, I wrote all this reader real quick. Twenty nineteen was another great year of partnership between the city of Horace and the Cass County Sheriff's Office. This year presented its fair share of challenges. The construction throughout town caused many headaches for the citizens of Horace, the southeastern portion of Cass County, as well as for our office. However, through hard work, a solid community partnership, and plenty of patience, we got through it together. Calls for services were up drastically this year, that can be attributed to many different things, however, we believe one reason for the trend upwards and the deputies, is our deputies' commitment to Sheriff John's promises to hold community, to build community relations, community preparedness, and transparency. This year, our office looks forward to continuing building positive relationships in the community of Horace, and to work even harder to serve your community in any which way we can. Twenty twenty should be our challenging year in town with another busy construction season ahead, however, we're eager for that challenge and look forward to another great year. Next page is all our numbers, as you can see, calls for service are almost doubled from twenty eighteen. Even though the stats below it, a lot of those stats are pretty on par with what we've had the last couple of years. The numbers we're not seeing there is mainly related to traffic complaints that came from the construction, people living in areas in town where people were cutting through the detour, namely Sunnyside Street and Brink Drive. It was both people calling in traffic complaints, speeders, stop sign violators, stuff like that, but also every time a deputy would go to one of those areas that we had deemed a troubled area or a problem area for traffic, they would create a call for service called the traffic complaint, where they would then patrol the area and add comments to that call, and that's not one of the stats we keep, but those were very high. And just a, a small tidbit about these numbers, if it's never been explained how we get some of these numbers, or where, what areas pertain to these numbers, this is included, obviously, city limits is in here, as is most of Horace's rural addressing, so the area around town. The deputies assigned here, me and Lindsay last year, and now me and Tom this next year, we spend probably ninety-nine percent of our time in the city limits, patrolling the area, but especially at night, we tend to go a few miles out each direction. Nighttime, this is a pretty, pretty sleepy, quiet community at night, which is very good, we like that a lot.
Like that, too.
But a lot of the stuff on the outskirts is where we find a little more of the folks who don't have such good things in mind, so we do spend a little bit of time, so we do, we do count those in here as well. And obviously, only me and Lindsay last year couldn't have done sixteen hundred calls, that just wouldn't have been possible, so. We got a lot of help from other deputies, or else we would have been, I'd be even more bald than I am. If I wear a hat. What's, what isn't included in our call for service number is building checks and C O P. What C O P is, it's, we call it community oriented policing, it's any time that we stop out and just chat with someone in the community, go to Casey's and get coffee, stop out of businesses, we don't count those, if we were to add building checks, and those are after hours, we go to businesses, shake doors, make sure they're locked, stuff like that, we do well over two thousand calls for service. Our filter that we have, the search stops at a thousand, and I had to do that at least twice to get through the year, so we have had over two thousand calls, but we don't count those, because those are more self-initiated. Average hours a month, three fifty-one. We're obligated for three twenty a month through our contract, but we were able to go past that and get about thirty extra hours a month on average, so. And then after that is every month's individual report, we don't go through all those, we've done those already, but. Does anybody have any questions or comments about anything from last year, or? Any, any of these numbers or anything?
I mean, the trend lines don't seem to indicate any issues other than just the normal.
No, certainly not.
We've been dealing with, so.
Drug-related calls are, I mean, from twenty seventeen to twenty nineteen are way down, twenty seventeen we had thirty-one drug-related calls, twenty nineteen we had nine. I'm not going to stand up here and say that that's all because we stopped all the crime in town, that's not true, maybe people aren't.
No, but there's been more of a presence.
There certainly has, yeah, we've been trying very hard to have some of a reputation of being here a lot and kind of being shown, so we think it's paying off. Again, I'm not going to sit up here and tell you that we're. You know.
No, but when you go.
McGruff the crime dog, but.
When you go from one halftime to two full-time, that's going to change.
Certainly.
That's the way it works.
Definitely.
You know, owning a business in town. And seeing the little card on my door during the night, I know you probably get them, too. I'll tell you what. That's pretty cool. I, I say thank you, you know, for all of us, that is nice to see. I catch on camera every once in a while, and, and it's nice to see that you guys are looking out for us.
Do you need any cookies or anything like that out for him?
I, I need to.
That's a fantastic idea.
I left the door open one time, and you know.
And when you, and when you leave it open, we will let ourselves in to make sure everything's okay, so. Yeah, your, your place looks real comfortable, I've never, never got to go in there, but. See, that was a good year, I mean, we'll have more construction this year, but it won't quite be on the level of the roundabout, hopefully, unless there's something you guys aren't telling me, which.
Nope.
I'd like to know now to up my heartburn medication.
Seventeen will be open this summer, okay?
Good, good, that's the main concern. So, was no further questions about that, we'll just run through the January one really quick, if that's alright?
Yep.
Oh, you wanted to go to the other?
Yeah.
Yeah. So in January, we had about one hundred and twenty-eight calls for service, that's right on par with last year's average, if my math serves, it's about a hundred and twenty plus or so a month, last year we averaged. Four crashes, two reckless driving calls, zero juvenile complaints, seven animal calls, one alcohol-related call, which was a DUI in town, five medicals, seventeen citations, forty-nine warnings, zero parking tickets, and zero drug-related calls. I'll just read the paragraph quick. This month, we experienced one hundred and twenty calls for service, and this number includes sixteen calls related to traffic complaints, as well as seventeen calls for deputies attempting warrants or civil papers. There have been a string of vehicle break-ins in Fargo with vehicles that are running outside of homes and businesses being targeted. Vehicles running outside, please lock the vehicle or use an auto start when available. That was published by the Fargo Police Department's Facebook page, a certain nationwide gang, or theft ring that kind of goes through different parts of the country, and targets vehicles outside of businesses, a lot of daycare centers, because moms and dads leave their cars running and bring their kids in. So a lot of thefts and stuff like that's been going on, we haven't seen anything down here for that, but I thought it was a good warning this time of year. I know my car sits running outside my house. A lot, but I have a squad car outside, so if someone steals next to a squad car, they're pretty bold. They probably deserve to take what they took. So yeah, that's just a good warning. I, we haven't had anything like that in town, which is really good, or pretty much anywhere in Cass County, so.
So, no issues with cars being parked on snow removal routes and so forth? I know it's a hot topic in other communities, so.
I guess being on nights, I'm not really sure, Brenton, you have anything on that, or?
We've had some problems.
Have we had to tow? We haven't had to tow anybody at this point, right?
I don't think, I don't think we've pushed for having that done yet.
Okay.
So, there's, I, I work nights, so I see a lot of vehicles that are out and about that are probably on the roads. During this, during the last snow removal, I didn't have much time to go around and check, because it was pretty chaotic out there. But if there are problem areas at night, especially when I'm on, they'll, they'll get warned, if they're not moved the next night, they'll probably get towed. Especially in the, the Lost River area, there's a few spots where it becomes pretty dangerous with, you have one lane going through, and cows can't get through, so. And all those four crashes that we have listed, none are on the roundabout, again, roundabout's doing really well. I took a nice slide around there last night, it was a little slick, so I understand if people, if, it, it's, it gets slick in that little low spot, so it's definitely a, a learning curve, pass going, going straight through there, but. Yeah, everyone's been doing really well through there, we haven't had much, to do much enforcement this summer, we'll probably focus on it a little more to make sure people know what to do before the schools start opening, so that.
But that's my only concern, too, I know people go over the stripe line, you know, cut in the corner a little bit, so as you get more traffic, there are people that have to learn to stay in their own lanes, or they're going to be kissing.
Yeah, the two-lane, the two-lane roundabout's a little different for this area, you're going to get used to it, so yeah.
Some of the striping that hasn't been done yet. Might help a little?
Yeah.
Jim? Are they going to add clear direction when you're coming into the roundabout, like on the road for turning, the turning lanes and stuff?
They're going to add a little white sign to it, that didn't, wasn't able to get done last year, and the sign still has turn only on it, but just adding up the only is the only thing that they're going to do, so. Hopefully, when people have full year, be able to drive on it, they'll.
Well, I feel like when you drive in, when you're coming into it, you should almost see like a right turn arrow, or?
There's one there.
Yeah, maybe it's just the winter.
But, yeah, it's, it's there.
Is it kind of like an angled skewed arrow, or?
No, that's one of the, the acceleration. Pushes you back again on the north side. Again, I think as we go through, beginning in the summer months here, we're probably have to put some more educational videos or something together to kind of just explain, because when the school opens up here in this fall, that's when there's going to be all those pattern changes of the traffic that's going up there, so. Maybe something we'll have to look at doing, too, just more for an educational, how to negotiate this dual lane roundabout.
Certainly, I mean, we, we could certainly help with anything you want, we can help with the sense of the video, or, I don't want to be in it, but we can certainly help. There's, there's plenty of people in our apartment who would probably love to, but.
Yeah, I think that's something we'll talk about, so we've got something, we can spend kind of the summer just getting people up to speed to what to expect this fall, so.
Some of the residents coming from the east, going north, have commented that they've been given some not-so-mic gestures, or, because people don't realize they have their own lane to go on.
Yeah, that, that second lane where it's just dedicated to turn, a lot of people think they're going to get merged into, and.
Yep.
So it'll be a learning experience in the spring here, especially in the fall when the schools start going, but.
So I think we'll do something like that.
Certainly.
Alright, anybody got any other questions? Thank you, sir.
Thanks, everyone.
Alright, Lucas, you're up on the next one here.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, the first item we have is Water, Storm, Sewer, and Street Improvement District twenty twenty-two, which is eighty-first Avenue, a street that's by the, the new school. Early on this year, the school actually petitioned the city to have that work done. Their petition was not, didn't cover enough land for the whole improvement district, so the city council approved that resolution of necessity in December, December sixteenth of twenty nineteen. Our office then published the resolution of necessity in the newspaper on December twenty-third and December thirtieth, informing residents in that improvement district that there will be a hearing tonight, and they can protest the project, if they'd like, they can file, they're required to file a written protest with the city, and then they're able to speak at tonight's protest hearing. So that thirty-day appeal period, or protest period, has expired, and we are now having a public hearing tonight to hear those protests. I have two protests here that the city administrator received via email, so if you want to open the, the public hearing, I can read those to the council.
While we do that, then we'll open the public hearing for the protests, protest hearing on eighty-first Avenue.
So the first one I'll read to you is from Brian Stute, I believe, says, my name is Brian Stute with Stute Brothers Properties LLC, owner of a parcel, parcel number one-five-dash-zero-seven-seven-zero, dash, zero-zero-zero-four-zero, dash, zero-four-zero. I received a letter stating my property is identified as being within an improvement district boundary. After looking at the map with the letter, there is no benefit to my property, and it should be removed from the district boundary. The benefit would be to the developer of that property, and they should be the parties responsible for the associated cost of the improvements. The poor alignment of eighty-first Avenue south ensures that there is zero benefit to my property, and therefore it should be removed, let me know if you have any questions. So just basically saying that they just want to be removed from the improvement district, but not protesting the project itself. And then Eno's also emailed the city, saying that they would like their properties, they have several properties listed in there, saying that they would like those removed from the assessment district as well, they are here, so if they would like to discuss their email to the city council.
I mean, it's the same thing.
Yeah.
It has, it has all the parcel numbers.
I just say no, because you're here if you want to.
Well, just making sure that you got it to be discussed, but yeah, because there's no benefits. We don't even have access.
Right, that's what I was going to say, so that's what, I mean, anything extra that you want to add into that, or what you were just saying?
Basically, there's just no, there's no, there's no benefits.
Yeah.
So, so we're not protesting with the other district, or it's just a different possibility, if you want to.
Okay.
So it is up to be removed off the assessment of that.
Okay. Do we have a map of that?
I, dude, I was going to ask a question, do we have enough? Was that?
Enough data?
Did we review that map from, assessment district from? When did we approve that assessment district, or do you have it?
We'll pull one up.
Ah, okay.
We, we'll show you the general area.
So, so the, the map itself or the boundary is not going to change, just so you're aware, that boundary is set at what it is. What could potentially happen? All of these, they're not protesting the project, they're just saying they want their property removed from it, so my recommendation on something like that is to go to the special assessment commission and say, my property's not receiving this benefit, therefore our assessment should be zero.
Well, they're the ones that will have the ultimate say on this. I know, but it's more for the.
City council has the ultimate.
But I mean, they're going to be the ones that make the recommendation based upon protests, so. But it's more to give the folks an idea where this is at, so we can, um.
Yeah.
Get a little better idea.
So while we're waiting for that one, Mr. Mayor, there's another one that was received from Jonathan Baltima.
Okay.
Looks like five-nine-four Main Street North.
That's a dental office.
Yeah, dental office.
We received a letter concerning the potential special assessments for the Street Improvement District twenty twenty-two, to extend road and utilities towards new developments in the east. We are submitting our formal request to not be included in the special assessments for this project, as our property does not have a direct benefit. We are still paying on the special assessments that have been previously levied for similar projects, road, water, sewer, that directly benefited our property. Thank you for your consideration, with respect. Jonathan Baltima. So those are the.
Try to just Google.
The letters that were received.
Again, they're not protesting the project, it's just.
They're just saying they don't receive the benefit, and so they don't want.
Yep.
To have to pay for it, which I totally understand, but I think the better avenue for that is to present that argument to the special assessment commission as they make the decision, the initial decision, and present that to the city council.
What we're trying to do is pull up the Google map here, at least show, I can show you the general area.
Yeah, just so everybody's aware.
They're all in the roots addition, so this is the one that you're there. So it'd be just, here's the church, and then we just saw the church, and we all property, there, there are handful of properties living here.
So just, Brenton, while you're up there, just mark, okay, the road, eighty-first Avenue, is it going to go all the way straight west?
Eighty-first will go.
It'll go east?
Here.
Yep.
Here.
And it'll go north, right?
And then it'll go north-south, connecting to Lakeview.
Right, but it's not going to cross the railroad, the old railroad bed.
No, it wouldn't, it wouldn't connect to those properties, and that's why.
Yeah.
That's why they sent the letters.
Right, that's why I'm trying to get that, so people understand what this conversation's about.
Yeah.
But the assessment district, is that including all the way to County seventeen, and where, where are the?
Did we do a square, again?
Seventy-sixth Avenue to the, this is about here, no, it goes to city limits, so right there.
Oh, so it goes all the way to the city limits?
Seventy-sixth Avenue to the east city limit down, keep going down there.
So it goes down to eighty-eighth?
It goes down, about half, halfway down that, that last, so the quarter line. So, and then back to seventeen, probably, there.
Quarter line. Okay, so it, it, basically, the school will probably bear a significant brunt of the assessment of the cost, but, but as well they should, because they are receiving the majority of the benefit. Then again, it's going to be up to, it's going to be up to the assessment district to set that percentage. Based on that, so, okay.
It's mainly the school and Cub Creek, and then Lakeview, those three are the primary beneficiaries.
Okay, does anybody else have any other question? I just wanted to show you guys that, so we're all on the same page, as to what's, why they were in here. Anybody else have anything they want to comment on, on eighty-first Avenue?
I don't know.
Proceed. Let us know who you are for the record.
Brian Kanowski with that company, and we're in the process of doing the P U D that's on the, the next agenda. But what I wanted to say was, in our area, we are putting in a retention pond, and that was one of the things we had talked about, was, does this benefit this side of the railroad track, if everything flows toward us, or if we're retaining all our water on the parcels that we're purchasing from Eno's? How do we handle that, and, and, and maybe that is just a, through the assessment board, as you've already stated, but I just wanted to say that we are putting in a retention pond for our area there.
Okay. Alright. Anybody else? Going once, going twice. Okay, Lucas, unless you've got something else, I'm going to close the protest hearing. Alright. Okay, so thank you guys for coming tonight and talking about that, but I think what your remedy's probably going to be with this special assessment group when they get together, but you guys will be working on that, right? I mean, that's kind of what.
Yeah, so do we need to write another letter, and to who and when?
So I don't know the timeframe on that, but the city has in the past directed our office to send out letters informing residents of when the special assessment commission will be meeting, so you will likely get another letter. From our office, letting you know when it is, it's, we don't know when that's going to be yet, it depends on when the project gets done.
Do you use the letter you already have from us, or do you have to do?
Uh, I, it'll be different, because it's a.
It'll be a different time.
Hearing, or a different meeting.
Just to let you guys know when the meeting's going to be, so you could be at it.
Yeah, so what, so what had to happen tonight to protest is the majority of the property owners in that area needed to file written protests, and then come before you and present those protests to you. It appears as though with all these added together, it does not equal a majority of the area included within that improvement district boundary, just so you're aware. So we, and moving on, Mr. Mayor, we crossed off eight B, and so we can do eight C, which is the resolution declaring insufficient protests, and that's just saying that there weren't enough protests filed, and then filed with the city, and then discussed tonight to protest proceeding with this project.
Okay. Close the hearing. Did you guys have any? Did you guys have any questions on this, or?
Nope.
Okay.
Yeah. Being said that, what's the conclusion of that, if there's not a majority?
Majority of the property within the improvement district boundary.
Result?
Then they're, they're permitted to move forward with the project.
Well, yeah, we're not protesting project, no.
Right, yeah, so that's, that's, two separate ballgames here.
Yeah, I know, that for sure, yeah.
Yeah, the special assessment committee won't be meeting until, what, we get done with the project?
By next year?
Yeah, by next year.
Oh.
There's a pretty. Yeah, there's a big timeline here before we get to that part of the show, but. Okay, so what we're doing next here, then, is it's again, the resolution declaring insufficient protests, so.
Make a motion to approve the resolution declaring insufficient protest for eighty, eighty-first Avenue Improvement District.
Okay.
Did I say that right?
Nailed it.
It's always a gamble. Look at it, Lucas, trying so hard.
Alright, so we got the motion on the floor, or anyone, okay, Chelsea does the second. Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Alright, motion carries. I assume you want us to go straight to D then?
We got rid of that.
There, D is out, okay. Just checking to make sure I'm all right here. Alright. So then we're good with the eight, Lucas, or anything else you want?
Yes, sir, no question.
Then we'll move along to number nine, Barrett, you got this one?
Good evening, commissioners, staff received an application for a final plat, application plat, and a second reading of a zoning change from Seaway Neighborhood Committee Development of the proposed yearly addition, as shown on the map above you here. The application proposes a re-plat of Root's Edition and Root's Second Edition to a four lot, one block subdivision of approximately three-point-five acres to accommodate for mixed-use buildings, or two mixed-use buildings, the details of that development are in your staff report. Also, the details of the land dedication proposal are included in your report as well. Because the site currently has easements for the building to be constructed, the final plat request of vacate easement is shown on the table in your staff report. Memo from the engineer was received to verify that the easements were not occupied, so that state statutes are compliant. The proposed development is not allowed by right in the Seaway Neighborhood District, so therefore a zoning change was requested, and the details of the zoning change are included in your staff report. The city commission approved, or the city council approved of the first reading of this application on January twenty-first, and staff. and staff's request in the second reading said the rezoning can be, uh, finalized. So, uh, it's required by the ordinance, uh, notices were sent out, the public letters were received. Uh, staff has evaluated the application and finds that the city ordinance requirements have been met, so therefore, uh, staff recommends approval of the proposed, uh, plat, uh, rezoning, vacation plat as outlined in the staff report. Any questions, please let me know.
I don't think anything's changed since we did the, uh, the, the prior plat, I mean, is anything different? I mean, I just kinda briefed through the reports, so, but I didn't see, nothing came out glaring, so.
No, it's pretty fixed.
Unless you guys got any questions or something. So yeah, we gotta do another public hearing, so, okay, I'll open it up, uh, for a final plat public hearing on the, uh, yearly addition. Anybody's got any comments, questions, concerns? Okay, going once, going twice. Okay, I'll close the public hearing of the final plat.
Motion to approve the final plat?
Seven.
Second. Chelsea makes a motion, Dave gives a second. Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right, motion carries, so you want, okay, number B then?
I apologize, uh, all I just covered, you have to put it all packaged together.
Okay, so I didn't catch that, so, all right.
So do you mean to change the motion?
Motion to approve. Is this a vacating the plat? Is that what you're stating?
It's a motion to approve the final plat, vacation plat and, uh, second reading.
He combined them all into one, he says.
No, no, in terms of presentation, so I just wanted to make sure I'm stating it correctly. So so far what you've done is you've approved the final plat, so if you want to just not have a new motion to do the other two, that's totally fine.
Okay, so accept the motion for the other two.
So moved.
All right, Dave.
You're gonna word it?
Yeah, it'll be another, be another motion on there. Just put ditto.
Yeah, exactly.
All right, can I get a second?
Second.
Okay, Brandon, a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right, that pays care of number nine, all crew. All right, Lost River Edition, Barrett, you got this one. And Lucas, who's up first on this one?
Well, we're gonna tag team this one a little bit, so, uh, Barrett will cover final plat, public hearing, and then the rezone.
Now, are we combining these? All I wanna do is know upfront before we go.
I will, no, we'll, all right, we'll baby step you through there.
I will be combining, uh, final plat and rezones.
Okay.
Yeah, okay, see, that's why you asked those things.
Under the improvement district, uh, like said, Lucas said, I will tackle this one here. The improvement district agreement, their I D agreement is fairly standard. Uh, we've gotten to the point where we don't have to go back and forth change much within the improvement district agreement. Uh, the areas that are typically impacted really is just the dedication area. And that's where we do have some discrepancies. Um, within the park district's recommendation, their recommendation layer shows a cash and lieu dedication of ninety thousand dollar, ninety thousand three hundred seventy-five dollars. Uh, that was based on their recommendation for this when they did employment, when they did preliminary plat about a year and a half, almost two years ago. As you recall, this development did have some delays. Uh, part of it was due to paving the wall avenue. Another part of it was there were some army corps issues with four oh four and four oh eight permit. Uh, the developer's been able to overcome those hurdles, uh, so that's why we went forward with the final plat. But the park board's recommendation was for ninety thousand three hundred seventy-five dollars for fifth addition. The staff recommendation, we do have our resolution to say it's a dollar fifty per square foot for, um, cash and new dedication for any, any new developments. If you look at it from that angle, it comes out to three hundred eighty-two thousand, or three hundred eighty-two thousand forty-two dollars and ninety-eight cents. So you can at least see where we're coming from staff-wise, that's why you have a discrepancy. Either one, there could be arguments made for each angle. Uh, Lucas could expand on your options of what you have based on the ordinances or the ordinance. Uh, we, the council did update this ordinance a while back, but the only change to that ordinance was to allow for public facilities to be a participating cost within this, uh, ordinance in cash and new dedication. So it basically opened the angle where council can use it for other amenities like streetlights or a bike path or really anything you think of public facility wise. The developers also, we've had some discussions about, uh, they've had some interest in doing, fronting cash and lieu dedication for future grounded, or future development, the rest of Lost River. That would help with the park district or with the implementation of that park. However, we do not have a recommendation from the park board on that, so keep that in mind. So Lucas could expand if there's a, anything else on your options.
Well, as far as the options go, so one is obviously that, um, the resolution where you set those fees, which was, uh, done on July first of two thousand nineteen. Uh, so residential development, uh, you have a dollar fifty a square foot. So that's under the city's ordinance is one way that's done is annually the city council sets, uh, the fee by resolution. Uh, that's set to expire, um, December thirty first of two thousand twenty, so that's option one. Uh, option two, the subdivider may submit a copy of the purchase agreement, um, and the city can, can base the fair mar, market value of that land dedication, or the payment in lieu of land dedication based off of the purchase agreement. The third option is, uh, the fair market value may be based upon a current appraisal submitted to the city by the subdivider. So another option, you could request that the developer obtains that appraisal and you can base the fair market value, uh, upon that appraisal. And then the fourth option, if the city disputes, uh, each appraisal, the city may, at the subdivider's expense, obtain an appraisal of the property by a qualified real estate, uh, appraiser, which appraisal shall be conclusive evidence of the fair market value of the land. So basically what I'm doing tonight is presenting you your four options of setting the fair market value for payment in lieu of land dedication for ten percent of that new development, so of ten percent of Lost River Fifth Edition. And so what was recommended by the planning commission, uh, to you and from city staff, was city staff's, uh, recommendation of the three hundred and however much, two thousand, based on the, the resolution setting a dollar fifty as the price.
So basically, option one is what you were, was what came down?
Correct, is what was recommended, uh, from staff to the planning commission, planning commission then, um, presented it to you.
I do have one other item for your consideration, the developer did request a reduction into layer credit. We currently require seventy-five percent layer credit. They did ask for that consideration of a fifty percent layer credit. So I do wanna bring that up for your discussion. I don't wanna mix issues too much, but just so you're aware of those two requests. But we're looking for council direction of those four options or those different options. What would you like to see? And that will kinda determine outcome for, or the path for the rest of the agenda items, or items tied to this agenda item.
Helping out a little, guys, I'm gonna kinda stay out of this one, so I'll let you.
We see that the developer is here, you have a different perspective as well.
Jack, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and members of the council. Uh, Jack Dwyer on behalf of Winnie Development, and I've got Tom Samuelson, who is the president of Winnie Development, with me. I guess what we're proposing is that, um, has, have you guys had an opportunity to take a look at my letter? That I submitted to the park board?
Was it in the list?
It wasn't in the packet there.
Okay.
No.
Um, what we're proposing, um, and, um, I see Justin Germinson, who's working for the Forest Park Board, is here as well. I guess what we've been discussing, um, over the last month or two, uh, when we found out that the park board had previously recommended a cash and the amount of ninety thousand, which was based on, I guess, the standard operating procedure of the city at that time. Uh, we submitted an appraisal, um, that that was based on. When we realized that that letter had been issued, we, I guess, um, I guess assumed that that would be acknowledged. Uh, but we also talked about having Winnie Development pay, um, the current, uh, amount of a dollar fifty a square foot for the additional eighty-seven acres of land that is going to be developed in the future, uh, that's within the Lost River addition plat, or outlots. And, uh, to pay that eighty-seven acres of cash and lieu now. So that would increase the ninety thousand three hundred seventy-five, uh, dollars. The, uh, eighty-seven acres would come out to fi, uh, five hundred and sixty-nine thousand and ninety-one dollars for a total cash and loop payment of six hundred and sixty-two thousand dollars. And the reason that we, uh, I guess had talked about that with Justin Germinson is that that would be a way to reduce, reduce the bond requirement for the Metalark Park, um, which is just about to be bid out by the Forest Park District. Um, we're very excited about that project. It got a little bit expensive and, uh, it's a, it's a two point one million dollar park. And, uh, so by, I guess, paying that money now, we could reduce that two point one million dollar number down to like a one point five million dollar bond requirement or something like that. And so that's, uh, that's the proposal from the developer to, to, um, I guess, honor the previous approval uh, that was obtained in November of two thousand eighteen and then allow us to pay that cash and lieu for the future development for a total of six hundred and sixty-two thousand. And so that would be the, the proposal that we're pitching.
So what we're stating, I understand, just so we can understand, Jack, is, so we, the previous park boards said ninety. We're saying right now three hundred and sixty?
Three hundred and eighty-two thousand.
Three hundred and eighty-two. And you're stating, I'm assuming that that was brought later, and so we're saying, can we make a slight adjustment versus you would take your, what, did you say eighty-seven additional acres, right?
Eighty-seven acres, yeah.
Yeah.
And that's the next, that's the next phase? Or that's the final phase? That's five.
So the, the phase that we're working on right now, the Lost River Fifth, is about fifty-eight acres. And so the three eighty-two is the difference between the, a buck fifty a square foot.
Yeah, the difference of what was originally given to you.
Right, and the ninety thousand, which is about fifteen thousand bucks an acre, or fifteen hundred dollars for the ten percent.
So the council, my understanding, has not taken any action on park dedication tied to Fifth Edition or future. So any action that has been taken by a board or a group has been park board making a recommendation. That's the ninety thousand. Then it goes to planning commission for their recommendation. Planning commission actually separated this out from the plat. A lot of times they'll handle it all into one, uh, they separated that item out. And their recommendation was to go with the staff at the hundred, or a dollar fifty, which came up to three eighty-two, three hundred and eighty-two thousand forty-two dollars and ninety-eight cents. Council has not approved either one or agreed to either one, is my understanding. So I just wanna make sure you know where, where you sit on it. As for the future dedications, just a reminder, park board has not made a official recommendation on that. There have been discussions about it, but the developer wasn't able to bring that up at the last park board meeting when they were talking about the development. So that is feedback we were getting from staff and developer wise, but they haven't taken the official action to make a recommendation to you for future dedication. So I just wanna make sure you're aware of that.
And I'd just like to say that, um, Fifth Edition doesn't have anything to really do with me, but the park, I am working with the developer on the park. So this, um, you know, this agreement has to do with the park and I'm gonna abstain from voting on it.
Do you guys have any other questions, Jack, if you'd like to?
Any questions, I guess, I'll just, if you have other considerations, so.
I'm trying to wrap around all this.
Yep, so just so I can make sure we're all, so previous Fifth Edition did start at some point when we were at that original recommendation of the ninety thousand dollars and then you got delayed with the other, uh, watershed district and diversion stuff, right? You had to go get some additional permits, that's what kinda slowed it down.
Uh, yep, we, we found out we needed to.
Whatever, four something forty-three or whatever permit, something like that.
We needed a four oh eight, a four oh eight permit.
Okay. And in that interim, we have changed our resolution, right? It states we went to a dollar fifty a square foot. In the, also afterwards, we have gone back to the park board and asked for their recommendation and they reaffirm the original recommendation, right?
Yep.
So quote unquote, we're at a two hundred and ninety-two thousand dollar difference.
Yep.
Right? Okay. With his proposal, is there any legal things we can't do with that proposal or is that directing too much?
At the end of the day, the city council has the ultimate authority on what's done with land dedication or payment in lieu of land dedication. I don't know what's gonna happen with a relationship here between city council and, and park board, but it's, the money is ideally going to be used for that park.
Right.
Justin, you got the?
Yeah.
Yeah, can we get some feedback there?
Yeah, yes.
So when I was talking to Wade about this whole thing, cause this was before my time when I started, I, I said we, we'd had the signed documents saying, hey, we're gonna agree the ninety two thousand. So I told him, you know, it's, it's ethically, I was like, you guys signed this agreement, we should hold to it.
Yep.
And so that's why we said, hey, let's hold to it, cause you guys signed off on it, cause he's gotta run his numbers, that's what he's basing it off of. So that's why with that, with the park board, I said, hey, you guys signed off on this, we can't change in the middle of the, so that, that was the reasoning for why we stuck to the original thing and then to Brent's future thing, yeah. A, any future cash and new dollars will go right towards the bond amount, so, you know, it's two point one million, so if we get six hundred thousand or eight hundred thousand, whatever, that'll just pull off the bond amount, so whatever, a dollar, so that, that future, um, recommendation will come through us this next meeting. So that, that'll be coming for, to be, cause I would recommend it be clean, simple, easy, if, if he would prepay everything, get it all, it's nice, clean and easy. It's, we lock the funds up and then.
Sorry, I mean, is that something you feel the park board would be open to?
Oh, yeah, 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 and I, I've done this a bunch of times, most part of it, that they, the developer's able to prepay cleaner, easier online and stuff. But every dollar that we do get cash and the funds goes right towards, it pulls off the, the bond amount, so it doesn't go in the general fund, it doesn't go anything, it goes right towards that project, that improvement district, so. But that, but that's kinda the core issue here is we honor the ninety two thousand or not, but that, it, all these options, it boils down to that, right? And, and it doesn't matter on the park side, um, I mean, we get either way, like I said, any, any funds we do get is going right towards the project, so.
It's kind of a matter of like where they're being pulled from, when?
Yeah, no, I just wanna make sure that if we make a determination or we all decide that we're okay with this idea that Jack has brought up, that we're not breaking it.
There's really two elements here, because the funding, I mean, like you say, we're paying down, you know, the amount that we would charge, you know, for constructing the park, which we all want, you know, and, and ideally we, we reduce as much as possible, but on the other hand, the, the balance essentially is gonna get assessed to at least all of those properties and where, where is that remaining balance gonna get assessed to? Right? So, I mean, it, it, and I agree with you that the rules change kind of in the middle, right? That's, that's where it's, it's really a tough situation to be in, because we're, we're trying to say, okay, let's make these, we want these parks, but we want the, the land, we recognize the land values are gonna increase and, you know, next five years from now, the, you know, the other eighty acres that you develop, that's gonna, the land value's gonna increase yet again, most likely. Right, at least we assume that.
So we're, we're allowing them to.
So Brandon's saying that about the assessment value to the properties, what does that do to the properties?
I mean, it, that, that amount is actually, is it coming out from that development or is it coming out from a larger area? You know, so in essence, it's, it, it, is that all gonna just stay within that Winnie development, in the Lost River development anyway? It's just that we're paying down as much as we can ahead of time. So from that standpoint, uh, does it really matter whether it's, you know, five hundred thousand, six hundred thousand or something else? It's just reducing that overall amount that's actually being assessed to the property owners in those developments, correct?
Yeah, cause we're, we're doing the project regardless, so it's a matter of if he's gonna shoulder some of the costs, we're gonna shoulder it, so I mean, that, that's what it boils down to is.
And, and you've already decided on. And, and you've already decided on the, the design, so you know the approximate cost, what the park is gonna be, so the cost is set. You know, it's just a matter of how much that you wanna do the, the payment in lieu of to reduce that overall bond that you're gonna go forward with, so.
And you set the district too, right, or?
Yep, yeah, the, the, the ball's in motion, so it's
The district boundary is all of the Lost River additions.
So the point of the matter is that, I mean, it's in your best interest to try and say, if we can reduce that overall bond, that's a good thing, because you're helping out those residents that are gonna be, current and future residents that are gonna be in that area. They're gonna, you know, it's just a matter of how much is gonna fall on their shoulders. And, and you're okay with the six, eight, what was it, six?
Six sixty-two.
Six sixty-two?
That's with the ninety-two.
That's with the ninety-two thousand, that was, so basically honoring the original agreement. And then, you know, with the, the amount for the five, the, the additional fifty-eight acres, and then the future eighty-some acres, right?
The, to clarify, the three eighty-two or the ninety thousand dollars is worth the current fifty-eight acre fifth edition plat.
Okay.
And then the additional money would come from the future additions.
Okay, so the balance of that six sixty-two would come from the future addition.
Right, so the math would be ninety thousand for the fifty-eight acres and fifth edition, and five hundred and seventy thousand for the eighty-seven acres.
Okay.
Based on the buck fifty a square foot.
Okay.
Quote, if we go by our, our ordinance, we're, we're stating we're weaving approximately two hundred and ninety thousand at the
Two hundred and ninety-one thousand, six sixty-seven.
That's, that's the staff.
The good, the good element, or good part of that is that it is a new development that is being, you know, will be plotted at some point. And we're applying the rules consistently, you know, or applying the, the The assessment amount, right, the dollar fifty per square foot, so the policy's being applied consistently. And I guess that's where I was headed. I don't want us to be setting one set of rules for one parcel of land and a different set of rules for a different parcel. And, and that's, that's what's, you know, what I was trying to get to.
Yeah. It's just that the original one was in flux when we did
Right, right, and we, but we really can't change that at this point.
You know, I, I think, I think the, the important thing here is, is we're honoring what we've agreed to with the city. And we're kicking in the extra for the future, which might be five years, might be ten years, but they get the money now.
Right. Yep.
And, you know, and we kind of honored our end of the bargain and waited so the city could talk about Wall Avenue, do some other things. And so we're looking to kick in under the new rules and ask the city to, to agree with their hand.
And you're okay with that agreement, Justin?
Yeah, I mean, like I said, this is before my time too, I, I just, I mean, Wade signed off on it in its agreement, so I mean, it's, it's, I feel it's kind of pulling the rug and rethem. So I mean, obviously, I'd like the bigger amount, obviously, but I, I mean, there's a sign, you know, and, and I know it didn't probably get approved by the city per se, but I mean, they're working off the, you know, President of the Park Board has signed off on it, so I mean, I, they gotta assume that's a document, so I mean, I mean, I mean, it's, it's clear to
Okay. Anybody else got any other comments? Lucas, anything else to add, or I mean, you kind of went through this?
Okay.
It's an expensive question.
Yep.
If it answered.
Well, I know this is one that's in, kind of has been in, in process, so I, I'm gonna state, I make a motion to accept their offer of the six hundred and some, to accept the ninety, you know, it's going against what the staff's saying, but accept the ninety and the additional, if Justin's in agreement there, can we go with that agreement?
Do you make an emotion for that?
Yep.
It seemed to be, it seemed to be a fair, you know, compromise
Compromise.
Between, I mean, granted, if we wait to assess a different, you know, property value in the future, well, th- then that doesn't reduce the overall amount, right?
Lucas, you had something else?
And to clarify, as part of your motion, is this money to be applied to the bonds um for Metalark Park? Because, you know, you're
That's the assumption.
Yeah, I know, it's an assumption, but
Yes.
It's a motion that should come through.
It has, it has to be approved, so any cash in lieu must be applied to that Metalark Park.
So you could include that in your motion to have that identified within the developer's agreement. That way, it makes it to where the park board has to do that. They have to put towards, even though that's what they said they're gonna do, it just says they have to put it that way. Uh, and then also, like I said, it's
My motion to make the statement that it'd be applied to that.
Yeah, that, that was my assumption, right, you know, from the get-go as well, so I'll second that.
Okay, so David made the motion, Brandon is the second. Okay. All right, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oh, you're not voting.
I did. Oh, we got it.
So what, so what you do have, to continue on the developer's agreement or ID agreement tied to that, you had to request for the fifty percent layer credit or seventy-five percent. Fifty percent is what the developer requested, seventy-five is the city's policy set by resolution. There were a few developments that were identified saying, these are in the pipeline. This was not one of them identified saying that it would qualify at the fifty percent. So that's up for your consideration. You can include that if you're comfortable with the developer's agreement, like it says, standard agreement. You can say, we want to keep the developer's agreement as is reflective of the park dedication amount you've already voted on with the seventy-five percent, or you can say you want to have fifty percent, either one. But then we go through that, but then you knock
Kind of like we did the last round, we looked for consistency here.
So, yeah, say that again, Brent, when was this started down the road?
This one was in the pipeline about a year and a half ago.
Okay.
Preliminary plat was approved.
Okay.
We didn't know, based on the complications that they had, at the time the resolution occurred, for layer credit going from fifty percent to seventy-five, they were starting to go through the Army Corps issues. So we didn't know how that would impact the development. So there were a couple of developments that were identified to say they could still be at the fifty percent, but this was not one of them, because we didn't know if this was something that was gonna be brought up in a couple of months, a couple of years, how long. So the council did not include Lost River Fifth Edition as a fifty percent layer credit eligible. Now, you can still allow
Up to this point, they've all been fifty percent layer credit.
Um, no, we've had a
Everything after Cub Creek is seventy-five percent.
Yeah, everything, we've had some coming out since seventy-five. I'm trying to think what one.
How is that written on that, seventy-five percent? Versus fifty percent, is our, is it the council's discretion to change it at any time and point? Or do we need to follow?
You could override your deci, the council's, the council could override its own decision, the resolution. You could also update the resolution, say, I'll update the resolution to be whatever. It's not best practice to go and bounce back and forth, they're trying to be consistent. By increasing the layer credit, the intentions of it were to help basically give a little bit more safety net for the city. If we had a crash in the housing market or something like that, it was more protection for the city, for those developers using those uh funds through the city, through
What's the timeline for holding the fifty or seventy-five percent?
It drops down as the development builds out. So there's increments, if they're having progress, let's say half the lots are built upon, then they're able to reduce their layer credit. And then there's different thresholds.
Built on, or half the lots sold?
Built on, built.
And they request that to the city auditor?
So like, we're going through that right now with Lost River. Uh, Jack and I have been talking about that here and uh reviewing their layer credit to where we can reduce their layer credit for Lost River first through fourth. Um, and so they'll be going through layer credit reduction here soon. But developers able to do that anytime, up to, well, once every six months, they're able to go through that layer credit reduction. And so, and then once there, I believe it was like ten or fifteen percent left of the lots, then layer credit drops off. And, and if, it depends on how the developer's agreement was structured, but Cub Creek was the first one where we started having our developer's agreement to where it could drop off at a certain point. So, yeah. Fifteen, ten, yep, ten percent.
Do we have a rough idea of difference in cost to them in the fifty versus seventy-five?
Oh. Six point, it's a six-point-eight million-dollar project. I can't tell you the cost for the developer on that layer credit, how much cost that would be.
In terms of what the layer credit would happen to you?
Yeah.
So fifty percent, three something, and, right, is that how we get off of that? So you'd be at four, so you'd be talking over a million, probably over a million bucks, right, difference?
Yeah.
Probably somewhere, somewhere in there.
But again, that was done to protect the city with all these new developments that are, that are on board right now.
Yeah.
Understand.
And to help with the bonding. So, it's, it's your, it's the council's decision. Uh, but we are holding the developers to that seventy-five percent, that's what we've been holding them to unless it's uh, unless it was a previous identified development to where it wasn't. So the only one that you have left on that list that was previously approved to be at fifty percent is Maple Lakes. That's the only one that was approved to be at fifty percent as a company council. Any other development that's seventy-five? Hard?
I thought Maple Lakes was seventy-five.
The resolution stated that they could be at fifty. Doesn't mean that you have to hold them, that it was saying it was possible.
Jack, do you have some comment?
Yeah, thank you. Um, um, just to go back, you know, we did file our first plat in April of two thousand eighteen for Lost River Fifth Edition. And it was at that time that the city asked us to slow down because of Wall Avenue. And uh, we withdrew our plat and we did take the opportunity to make it bigger. But uh, then we refiled in September two thousand eighteen. And uh, so this one's been out there a long time, and seventy-five percent wasn't on the radar at the time. And so with the additional cash in lieu and the additional financing amount, you know, plus the two-point-eight-seven-five million-dollar letter of credit that we already have with the city uh for the fifth edition, it's uh, the fifty percent would be much more comfortable for us. So, that's all I have to say.
How built out is the rest of Lost River?
Um, I was just gonna do the math, but
It's probably about sixty percent, I would say, or sixty and seventy percent.
We had closed on like ninety, I think eighty-eight, to be exact, eighty-eight lots out of a hundred and one-four. Um, so it's, I would say it's higher than sixty percent, maybe talking almost seventy-five. But that's closing, it's different than building.
Did closing on the lot, right?
Right, we've actually sold, but uh, there's a few that haven't been built on.
That's about seventy percent.
And I think the conversation when we talked about the upping the letter of credit was that any developments that have already submitted, I believe were gonna be exempt from it. I can't remember to what level.
But the resol, the resolution called off specifically, yeah. The, the council specifically called out what developments that were in the pi, they considered active in the pipeline. So Lucas and I did, we did go back, I looked at the med, medium minutes and they identified Vistos and Maple Lakes. And then we came back and had more discussion and council decided to put, allow Cub Creek, because it was, it was going through the pipeline. So those are the three that were allowed, because they're active plats going through. This one isn't an active, it wasn't considered an active plat, so that's why.
Because we had to have some criteria with that, just to We have this in process though.
You know, my personal belief is, it's not the fifty percent, it's the final ten, twenty-five percent that you worry about. You know, the lot, you're gonna have, how many of those lots will go for tomorrow when it opens up? Half of them probably. And, you know, it's, it's when you get towards the end. I believe in relationships, I believe in past history. I'm not against a fifty percent personally. You know, I, I think it's worked well many times. I think it's a tool that depending on who the developer is, makes a big difference in my book, in the relationship and the history we've had. I, I, I don't necessarily see a problem lowering it down to fifty percent in this case.
Okay. Do you want to make a, make a motion?
I'd make a motion that we, we, I, plus I also think the timeframe is just a little bit, you know, where it started, you know?
Technically?
And when we changed, um, I think it's enough for me to push it, I would make a recommendation that we just, we lower that to fifty percent letter credit.
All right, so John, you
I'll second.
So in your motion
Can I make a recommendation for a motion, just to make sure we're clear on this? Is that that applies to this one? So the final one you potentially bring, that you've already prepaid that, would go to our whatever credit at that time? Is that acceptable?
Paperwork, not motion on it, yes.
Yeah.
To, to save you from having to do another motion in vote, it's a motion for fifty percent layer credit reflect in and approving the developer's agreement.
I think we should table the developer's agreement, because I have a lot of things that I need to incorporate, and I want to make sure that I get them right. One being the park improvements that you just, or the payment in lieu of that you just approved, and then the letter of credit. And I want to make sure that our numbers are correct with engineering, if that's fine.
But we'll stay with the fifty percent.
Yeah, yeah.
Just put the fifty percent directly in the uh developer's agreement, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, because it says right here that it's seventy-five right now, in the developer's agreement, so we'll change that to fifty.
We just want to do the second part, which we're talking about.
Yeah, so you're just approving the layer credit, then?
Yep, okay, so John's made a motion, Brandon is the second, you have a discussion here, so let's pass for a vote, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All right, pass.
Okay.
All right.
I'll see.
So Okay, so we're gonna, we're still combining B and C here, right?
Yep.
Okay. Yes.
Uh, these are gonna be together, uh, so staff received an application for a final plat. Um, a replat lot two block six of Lost River Edition to a one-hundred-and-seventy-seven lot nine-block subdivision of approximately fifty-eight point seventy-four acres. And a second reading of a zoning change from A agricultural to R six high-density residential to accommodate for residential development. The property is located on the image you see on the screen up there. Um, this is the plat. And as required by city ordinance, staff sent out notice to property owners, uh, staff didn't receive any public comments. And staff has evaluated the application and finds that the city ordinance required to implement that. So therefore, staff recommends approval of the proposed final plat. And second uh reading of uh zoning change is outlined in the staff report. If there's any questions, please let me know.
Okay. So I guess this one, uh, because it's not second read, it was previously read, when was this, like? Many months ago or something? Another one, he's right, they got the
Yeah, it was, it was a while ago.
Okay.
Yeah, and, and the, the lots had changed on it, the lot numbers changed, um, which evidently doesn't matter, because we just did the whole thing.
Lot two? The, the lot two on the ordinance itself, you mean?
It, it's all the lots that are in there, egg to, to R six.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay, so we need to open a public hearing on this one, guys, so I can
For the final plat, yes.
Yeah.
Okay, so we'll open up a public hearing for a final plat, does anybody got any comments on the final plat at this point? Okay, going once, going twice, and we'll close the public hearing on the final plat. You guys have any questions?
No. We should approve the final plat for Lost River Fifth Edition.
I do have recommended, or something for your consideration is why you see the developer's agreements typically before the plat? Is so that way we make sure that developer's agreements are done. Um, obviously, they are needed in order to do infrastructure, but I would, I'd hate to say I'd do a contingency, but if you had a contingency of saying upon the, you, you can approve the plat, but then it's contingent upon that developer's agreement being executed. That way, we just have, you know, Lucas then can
Good recommendation.
He can go through, clean it all up, bring that back to you, but then we don't have to come back and deal with the plat one later.
So I'll make a motion to approve the final plat contingent on the completion and approval, approval of the fi, of the developer's agreement.
Okay.
I'll second that.
You made a motion, David is the second, okay? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay. Motion passes. All right. So Lucas, anything else, or Barrett, Barrett, anything else on lost, about number ten?
The, the second reading and the reason.
Did we put those, thought we could put these
You bumbled.
Okay, that's what it was.
You bumbled those. Yeah, so they bumbled those.
Yep.
Not, we can do one.
Lucas, if it gives you consternation, we can do it separate. Okay.
A lot of things are being discussed. Bundling, bundling.
I understand.
You guys felt there were bundles. Yeah.
All right, so with that, we'll move on to number eleven. Jim, you got those?
Yes, Mr.
Yes, Mr. Mary, council just approved the plat, so now we move forward with the public improvements. First thing you have is a resolution creating the district, and that's the old district map lying, the new one does not have Westbrook on it, that was sent earlier today, so. You'll notice on the upper right-hand side there, Westbrook is included.
Oh, so there's, there's a new map that.
Yep, I sent it to second.
Okay.
This is the map you're approving, it is basically that map minus the Westbrook neighborhood, so. We looked at the improvements and they are pretty specific to this development.
I'll open this one.
I did, yeah.
The Lost River Fifth, there you go. So the Lost River Fifth improvements will be directed to them and then there's an overhaul to the whole area for the stormwater improvements and discharge into the Cheyenne River, so. That is the district boundary map, residents need a resolution to create the district.
So moved.
Second.
Okay. You made a motion, John did a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay.
Next thing on our list is a resolution directing the engineer to prepare preliminary engineering reports. Engineer portal will discuss the existing conditions, propose improvements, um, funding what the project includes, district boundary and a proposal for, or a estimated project cost, so. Just a moving formality, starting that number, the next meeting we'll have F E R.
So moved.
Okay, John made a motion, give a second.
Second.
Okay, Chelsea made a second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right, who carries? Okay, Barrett, you got the next one on the list here.
Okay, uh, staff received an application for a preliminary plat of Lakeview Heights Third Edition from Chris Mack on the F out New Horizon Homes, after we'll see an image up there. Uh, they're proposing a five lot, one block subdivision to accommodate for future commercial development. Uh, this plat, um, is approximately thirty-one point twenty-seven acres. Regarding the land dedication requirements, uh, Horse Park District has proposed a payment of lieu of park land dedication in the amount of two hundred and five thousand dollars, eight, uh, two hundred and five thousand eight hundred eighty-six dollars. Uh, the application proposes private roads and commercial block lengths that exceed seven hundred feet. In order to allow for this accommodation, the city ordinance would need to be amended to allow for private streets and longer block lengths for commercial industrial uses. The planning commission approved of this application on January twenty-eighth with the condition that the text amendments to the city ordinances are approved by the city council to allow for private streets and block length maximums of, uh, one thousand three hundred and twenty feet for commercial and industrial uses. So as required by the city ordinance, uh, notices were sent out to abiding property owners, uh, no public comments were received. Staff has evaluated the application and finds that the city ordinance is going to admit. Therefore, staff recommends approval of the proposed preliminary plat is outlined in the staff report. If you have any questions, please let me know.
Barrett, how does that, the roads accommodate that one corner if it's not in that plat? For that beltman?
Uh, which corner is that coming through?
You're talking the three lots, the Christianson laws?
No.
Doesn't own those three.
He doesn't own those three.
Yeah, three lots there.
Down here.
On the east side.
The private road actually goes to that.
Yeah, so the private road starts here, runs along all the way out here, then we have another one that crosses over here.
Private road also is utility usement for water main and sanitary sewer, so sanitary sewer for main was property, so. Coming off of Lakeview Drive, water will be coming off of seventy-six avenue and access is through that private drive on the backside, so. That whole area is, is commercial, so that what is actually going to go there is still up there.
I get that, but you're also, you've got three lots owned by somebody and the one lot owned. Having everybody on the same page for a nice corner, commercial development is necessary.
Access has been, uh, been worked, been, the developer and the other property owners have been in discussions. We've asked them all along to be communicating and reach common ground on access.
And this is where common ground?
This is, this is the latest that we've had from them of common ground, just like, uh, the access off seventeen between lot five and four, uh, that they wanted to have, they each wanted to have their own access, we're trying to get them to work to the other and have one consolidated access. So that's what you see there before you do. But that's why the road is, or being proposed all the way through the backside, so there's multiple ways in and out.
So there is going to be another one after the county road seventeen between five and four?
That's just a proposed access, it has not been.
Oh, okay.
Granted by the county. Uh, the county approves access off county roads, uh, but they want to have it on a plat before they would take action to approve any access.
So it's basically where the temporary access is right now?
Generally, north, just north of it.
Well, would you be just.
And that's similar area, but this is just north of the middle of it.
I mean, that's the big concern is making it far enough away, I'm sure there's setbacks that are required for that before that access can be granted.
Yeah. It was building a comfort with the counties and the city engineering.
Because here again, we're, we're creating another bottleneck for traffic coming in and out of County seventeen, especially depending on, you know, what commercial properties go, you know, businesses and so forth, they go take up residence in those. I mean, if it's gonna create a lot of traffic in and out of there, now we're creating another.
Yeah.
Need for traffic management.
Which is probably why it's not lining up with seventy-ninth, to try to keep the traffic.
Yeah, we're trying to discourage straight through traffic seventy-ninth coming over. Uh, so we did, working with county and city engineering and all, we were looking at ways to offset it. That way it's not a straight path through and encourage traffic to go out Lakeview either direction.
Russ, you got something back there?
Yes, just for your information, that road you're showing going up and down right through the middle, that is not necessarily the location of where that will be.
Right, that's pretty much that temporary, that temporary road is right now, correct?
No, no, well, I don't know where the temporary road is, but that, that, even though it shows on the plat, is not necessarily where that, that's a private road also, but that'll be based on what's going, what commercial entities are going in.
Sure.
Where that will be placed. It will come down and connect to the north-south, I know this looks strange going this way, but the orientation isn't going south. But it'll connect to that private road that's, that's down there, but it's not necessarily in that location. That's gonna depend on the commercial entities that go in there.
Right, okay.
Seriously, it might not be from four or five?
No, no, I'm not talking about that.
Oh, yeah, I don't know what, sorry.
I'm talking about the private road, not public access.
Oh, one of that, okay.
Yes.
Okay.
So access to seventy-six would be from Lakeview, not from the private road anywhere?
They're trying to request, um, access off of seventy-six at some point in time, but hasn't formally been brought forward yet, just been approved with the developer.
Okay, I can't see from here, is that private, it goes behind the lots, does it go through to seventy-six?
Sorry.
It does, it turns and goes east.
Proposing is it above this here and then the other part sections here?
Russ is just saying that portion of that one we just crossed might gather something.
The one going north and south could move back, or the one going east and west could move?
The one going east and west.
Well, they're planning these easements, so these easements are being planted and that's, they could use those easements to provide those private streets. If they were to shift them, they would have to do a flat with the easement and then us could, you know, manage.
Okay, so if it's not gonna be in those locations, we're gonna see it, we're gonna have to approve it.
Yeah.
Right.
Good eye.
Yeah, go ahead, Russ, I'm sorry, I'm just trying to get a visual in my head here.
Okay. During, during the planning meeting, this, there was discussion about this. This road was, it's pretty much, way it is, this is the one I'm seeing, the positioning of this one may be over here, it may be over here.
Okay, but there will be, somewhere there, there will be a road that goes, so it's not like it's gonna disappear, right?
It's not gonna disappear.
Yeah.
They have to have one, it's a private street.
Yeah, okay.
I told them actually, remove that, leave it, leave it off, just because, uh, it's going to be a private road.
Mm-hmm, and like you said, it's based upon whatever they come up with, what's the schema for the commercial to go there.
And I also told them that the likelihood of them getting a, a right turn in, the right turn out there is not good.
Nope.
We're probably not going to allow it.
You're saying basically might allow one or the other, not both, or maybe not one?
No, no, I'm just saying, because the way it goes right now is this would come down.
Mm-hmm.
You'd come down, uh, seventy-six, do a right turn in.
Yeah.
You'd come out, do a right turn out, we're probably not gonna allow that. It's really not a good idea.
It's a sensitive item right there.
At.
So close to the route.
We're too close, you know?
And I know that, we're crossing a shared use path.
Mm-hmm.
We don't want people coming in, they can right turn across a shared use path, you're gonna kill somebody.
So what's your alternative, Russ?
That's to be determined, this is a preliminary.
I get that.
The, that was to be determined, maybe coming and go, coming in the back to Lakeview up here.
Well, that's what I was wondering, if they were just gonna come in on Lakeview and then come down that private, wherever that road would be.
That would be, that would be my, my preference, is that Lakeview handles it.
Yeah, because trying to put one down the corner, like you said, that's just gonna be prone for accidents.
Yep.
It's just.
Because you're gonna have people, people coming around the corner and coming to a screeching halt.
Mm-hmm.
Down on seventy-six.
Russ would get grumpy with us for doing something like that, right?
Never.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. You don't wanna be up there every ten minutes dealing with traffic accidents.
So with this being a preliminary and having multiple owners, property owners, and not seeing a very good turn onto seventy-six, do we even need to approve this right now, or should we just kick it back and make people keep talking and come up with a better scenario?
You could request them to hash out access. If that's your holdup, you could say, okay, you could approve preliminary, or you could deny it, either one. If you approve it, then you said, you could have contingency saying that the final plat would have to have changes reflected, just like the planning commission says.
Who's gonna approve the transportation? It's gonna be the planner, right?
Well, that goes through.
It's gonna come back to the planning.
Right. That goes through the planning.
Russ, I'm, I'm, we're just wondering, I mean, is this something we should punt back to you guys and get this hammered out a little bit more because?
Yeah.
He said, no.
I, I don't, I don't think you understand the, the changes that we actually end up making between preliminary plats and final plats.
Well, I mean, they, yeah, that's, we were just wondering, do you want?
See, we've, we've already had this discussion with, um, about these road issues.
Okay. So, we're voicing the same concerns then that you guys have, right?
Oh, we have these concerns that we want, we want plat, we want path, go ahead, I'm sorry.
Well, I was just trying to support what you're saying, that it should be a condition either of approval or denial from your body.
Right, okay, I mean.
And that will then go back to them with that condition on, saying.
Okay, with it being so many things variable, I make a motion to deny the preliminary plat.
Based on?
Ba- based on the in and out on seventy-six, based on, you're telling me a street may be, it's just, there's not one thing there that really is permanent. So let's not even start the ball in, in getting something that we might end up just eating later on.
Well, and so Russ didn't necessarily want the denial, but that was for the reason that there's progression happening and you're trying not, not to slow it down necessarily.
He's giving me a voice.
If, if they need a plat to discuss access to County Road seventy-six, if they need something in, in writing.
So, so that's, that's the milestone that you're trying to achieve, is getting plat that would, that they can then present for discussion.
Okay, not to seventy-six, but to County Road seventeen.
Oh, right, for county, right.
Yes, I'm trying to move it forward so we can actually.
Start that county conversation.
Get the county conversation and also get some of, some of the rest of the conversation going, because we've, we've already told them that the likelihood of, and they actually understood that, of the right in, right out, that there, there, that there will be an issue there, but to get.
So that's more satisfying requirement for the county than it is for us at this point? The county conversation.
Partly, but the other thing is, uh, you can kick it back to us and then we, and, and what you want us to deliver then on the preliminary plat is the final plat? That's what you're saying.
Right.
That's what you're saying, you want us to deliver you a final plat on the preliminary, and that's not gonna happen. Between the preliminary and the final, on another area, we added a road.
I'm saying I don't like this one, give me something else to look at.
But that's, but here's, okay, I get where you're coming from, John, but I think as, as a punt back though, but I mean, I'd, I'd say that it could be approved, but I think we should put some conditions on there that those, that the access be worked over again.
And so we're basically saying that we're agreeing with the same.
We're agreeing with you guys, so we're agreeing. Put a little more weight behind it, let's get it done, Lucas.
Mr. Mary, you have a motion.
I know.
There's not been a second.
Let it fail for a second.
Let it fail for like a second. Or how about I amend, can I amend my motion?
I would let this one fail.
We're failing your motion, nobody else brought it up.
Yeah, I believe that.
Now, do you want to start?
Okay, I want a second shot. I don't wanna be the total bad guy here.
Go.
And I don't want Russ looking at me like that.
You're gonna get the evil eye.
So I will make a motion to approve the preliminary plat, taking it back with some changes on the entrance exit on seventeen. The other question I got was, is that's.
You mean seventy-six?
On seventy-six, I'm sorry.
Seventy-six.
Is that still the best off seventeen? Because we're limited along seventeen what we're gonna get, correct? How many accesses we get?
But that's, look, that'll decide.
That's, that's the other thing.
So it'll be the county, the county's gonna be the one that kinda decides that, but.
The county is the one that.
Yeah.
And I really wanna state that all parties involved at ownership are all on the same page.
Did you get that paragraph, Lucas?
For access all the way along there.
I think there were two paragraphs, so.
I get a little long-winded, I know.
Say, Commissioner, just for clarification, what would you like to see with that access off of seventy-six, any specifics or?
Okay, just from my standpoint, I, I'm kinda with Russ, I do not want him to try and get on to the.
Traffic flow shouldn't.
Traffic flow shouldn't stop in and out here, that's gonna cause too much problems. I kinda like what Russ has talked about, either bring it back up here or use the private road, something like that.
Either, either A, there's no access to seventy-six and bring it back to.
Yes.
Either County seventeen or bring it on back to Lakeview.
Right.
Yeah.
I think that's the, that would be the easiest flow pattern to keep from having issues.
We, we want to limit the, the access.
Yeah.
Barrett, do you know the dimension from the roundabout to Lakeview of seventy-six?
Eighteen hundred feet.
Fifteen.
All right, so we got John's motion sitting on the table, I think it's all worded correctly if I understand.
I'll second that.
I think we got it good.
You wanna repeat it then, so?
No.
I just wanna keep moving.
It's kind of a conversation.
The train's going.
Chug. Chug.
All right.
Good job, John.
I've got a first and a second, so let's, uh, vote on this one, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right, passes. All right, Russ is back in your court.
Damn horse is just dead and dead and dead.
I know, exactly. You can, can I say one thing quick, Dan?
Sure. Cash knew that he's referenced, we're gonna be putting that towards the, that ten, ten acre parcel next to the elementary school, per se. It's one that eventually goes through, so if you have any questions on that.
Okay.
So. Next, where? The, to the new elementary school up north?
Yeah. All right.
On the thirteen, that would be, Jim, you're up on this one.
Yes, so, to continue with what we discussed at the last meeting on the Wall Avenue project. A public meeting was held on Thursday, July sixteen, uh, January sixteenth, twenty twenty, City Hall, forty residents were in attendance. They prepared memo on this, and Brian is gonna be able to find it.
I'm working on trying to pull it up.
So.
It's on, uh, SharePoint.
In order to get you, uh,
Trying to pull it up and.
In order to get the information to the city for the agenda items, this was presented last Wednesday, or completed last Wednesday. At that time, we received six comments and two emails, a summary of what was discussed. At that time, we received six comments and two emails. Summary of what was discussed in the public meeting was, we'll hit the high points, funding, how much it going to cost, what other projects are in the planning, short timeline, only two weeks for comments, need more options, even a menu to pick from, bike lanes, where to stop on the west, oh, how would I want to get an idea of potential costs, why isn't the entire city in the assessment district? That's a common theme if you can read, reading through any of them. Why not, why did the assessment district go any further east of County Road seventeen? City needs to put more thought in on the new assessment districts. Developers should pay a premium for the project due to they are driving the project. Wait until road, wait until future development is complete to pave the road. Any sewer repairs? Look at doing a permit fee for road construction for contractors. Tier assessments, assessments not being consistent, but it was also a policy. Main roads need to assess the entire city to find the four major arterials, which is already done, sixty-four, seventy-six, eighty-eight, hundred, those are the four arterials. Push a pay to benefit the city, more details, and then post notes on, post notes on website. So you've got a copy of everything that I've been sent so far. As far as comments, I received eight more, eight more initial emails on Friday and Saturday. Those were forwarded to you in an email earlier today. General consensus is reassessing on the assessment district right now. It's half a mile each direction from, from Wall Avenue and there was a lot of, a lot of residents thought it should be bigger than that, thought it should have been, I mean, a mileage, is it half mile? Half mileage, yeah. So where we go from here is the next question, is we somewhat committed to having another meeting with the residents to discuss these. We also talked about putting comments on the internet or on the city's website, Facebook, so they, people could review them. Can still be done. Like I said, they're just due on Saturday of last week, so I just got them all compiled, compiled today, so.
Yeah, we probably don't, we haven't had enough time to absorb this yet.
Right.
Probably make any decisions tonight on where we move forward. But I think too that we need to have some more conversation about, you know, the letters that we did receive.
Yeah.
And then maybe do some more conversation about the meeting that night, have a little, just whoever has a get together, we just talk about that a little bit, whether it's you and I or.
So I think it's important that we just say, but let's whittle down the least, I, I think we need to narrow down the options that are available.
Yep.
To base of the feedback, you know, either, either narrow the options or change some of those options from what we did, you know, proposed before, so. I, I think, yeah, let's just have another meeting to review those options, and then come back again at the next council meeting.
Well, if you're gone, the next council meeting, right, Corey?
Yes.
So, we can still do that. When do you leave again?
Twelfth.
So we could meet before, before you leave and we can present at the next council meeting.
Either later this week.
Yeah, we can do it Thursday.
Yeah, yeah, let's do it. If we can, let's meet on Thursday and review.
Yeah, okay, when we do that, and we can just kind of, like you said, narrow this down a little bit. Yeah.
I would like, I would like to engage everybody again in another, in a follow-up conversation, but I think we gotta, we gotta do some homework first.
Can I ask a question? One of the options, and what the impact of the is, do nothing this year, so we can do a little bit of study, a little bit of feedback, so we're more prepared next year?
And it's, I'm kind of leaning in that direction right now, but I can think.
I would need to.
This sets precedence for.
I know, I know.
Main roads and.
Because even though we stated, determine arterial roads, that's only one direction. Who says there aren't going to be additional arterial roads going north or south on either side? We make a precedent now, we're going to have, you know, that kind of stuff.
And that's just it. There are sixty-fourth, you know, I mean, we, we know that.
For what it's worth, I mean, most of the comments we got aren't against the project. A lot of them are agree that this road needs to be paved, agree this road needs to be paved.
But there's varying difference between people wanting a rural road.
Yep, there's a lot of that.
If you just put asphalt down, what's that versus just put a concrete and all these different.
So for our meeting that night, we did have some pretty pictures up, but I think we're going to do a little bit more with that, so people can get a visual of two or three priorities that we give them. Because I think people are still confused about how this bike path or shared use path is going to execute and how wide that road's going to be. But I think if we come up with some better pictures, when we get everybody back together again and have that conversation, we can kind of show more. People can just get a visual, maybe you'll just do something where you're looking down from, say, a couple hundred feet in certain sections. What's that going to look like?
And if we're going to assess the city as a whole for these section lines, we kind of need to know that before the assessment goes out for seventy-sixth.
Well, we did make seventy-sixth.
Seventy-sixth was the whole city.
Right, but, but that wasn't really the direction we were going to end up taking in the end.
May or may not, I mean, that was more because we have the guts of the main, our main arterial.
Yep.
The roundabout affects just about everybody.
I, I just think a little bit of this decision depending on that decision as well.
Agreed, yeah. But that's, that's what I mean, some of this stuff is going to be taken into account, albeit this assessment will come later again, but we do have to keep, keep that in consideration. Because we either define the boundary or we expand the boundary. So it's something to talk about.
And determine if we delay to you with potential impact.
Yeah, well, I mean, basically, it's going to cost a little bit more and more people are going to be impacted because there's going to be more people back there.
Right.
So it's just, that's the stuff we have to weigh.
Yep.
Again. All right, anything else? Otherwise, let's just plan that.
Yep, I think we'll do that.
Thursday then.
Thank you for collecting the input.
Yep.
Now we can, we'll talk on Thursday.
A little meeting action here just.
Sorry, I got to ask one question. We talked about this before, Lucas, we talked about impacting the whole city. It's a tough sell on Wall Avenue, correct? Wasn't that kind of some of the comment?
Well, yeah, just because it's, it's Wall Avenue on the, the west side only.
But if we create a policy for section line roads, would we be able to, for future roads like this, be able to do a citywide assessment? I lost you again.
Well, I mean, we had. What if something out and affect the policy of the city for the next twenty years?
Right. But that, we had this conversation at our last meeting, you know, about there's pros and cons to doing that.
Correct.
And that's, I think that might be a side conversation we'll have on Thursday too, just maybe do some pros and cons, so it can be presented so people understand. There is, it isn't all rosy happy thoughts going citywide with this assessment either, because that means that the people in the south part of town are going to pay for sixty-fourth avenue when that gets rolling. Same thing when, you know, when that all that improvement.
Seventy-sixth.
Into. Yeah, I mean, everybody's going to get touched by these roads, so in the long run, everybody's probably going to get touched the same as you would.
The other element of this is that we need to consider that there are city funds that are going to be included, so we, we need to, you know, hopefully by then we'll have more information around how much we can contribute from city funds to be able to offset the costs.
Right.
So I think that would help alleviate, you know, if we could at least throw all some numbers.
The city's going to have skin in the game on these roads.
Right, absolutely.
Absolutely, as they happen, so.
Absolutely.
One, one thing I do want to point out, just so folks in public know, you mentioned meeting on Thursday, that's a more like an internal staff meeting.
Yeah.
Uh, where the mayor and house membership senses his portfolio, uh, it's talking about capital improvement projects, but just so folks know, that's not a state council meeting, that is a, a internal staff meeting. So I just want to stress that, so everybody knows that.
Okay. Anything else on thirteen, or I think we got that one pretty much figured out right now? Unless you have anything else, Jim?
No, can we skip the fifteen real quick? I got another meeting I need to get to.
Okay, let's go there.
I know, I know.
Go.
So, uh, earlier today, the mayor and I had discussed potential flooding and.
The F word, shame on you, you brought it up first.
I brought it, I brought it up. Um, the mayor has been receiving some questions and calls from residents about flood insurance in areas that are flood prone or areas that aren't flood prone or areas that could be flooding. There's a lot of variables and a lot of unknowns with that. Um, after some discussion, I think that we will be evaluating that. We're working on some mapping and some other things. Uh, we're going to work through some items that can be placed on the city's website to kind of help some of the residents out, knowing where they are, knowing what FEMA classifies their area as. Probably put some links and maybe some guidelines on the city's website as to getting, getting some residents some more information on potential. There hasn't been a lot of discussion as far as what it could be, but a lot of us know what they're, a lot of people are talking about it, so. It's just something that's going to be eventually coming up.
That's why I was thinking, it's just something that the citizens can go check on the website if we get that link put up, so they can go see what their property, where does lie in the flood plain type of thing, and is it protected or not? Let's just try and get some more information out there so folks know, because like I said, we've got new people moving into town. They may not be familiar with how all this plays out.
Right.
So we have the diversion, but there are other sections of town.
The Horace diversion, so.
So, anyway. Anything else, Jim?
Anything else for me?
No, I don't.
Can I just say, I'm just really think, you said eighteen hundred square feet, or eighteen hundred feet from the roundabout to Lakeview?
Going south.
Going south.
Oh, okay. But I was asking going, yeah, I was asking going east.
I figured that once I, I, yeah, that way, I, I'm not sure what it, I think it's like seven hundred. I want to say it's like half of it.
Okay.
No, it's further than that. Yeah.
It's a fifth.
It's, it's up around a thousand feet.
Because that, that is quite a bit. I mean, i- it's tough because actually now looking at it, a thousand, yeah, that's a lot different, but it, it still is a pretty long distance, but, yeah.
The splitter island is further roundabout, is in the way of it too. That's something I think about.
Okay, well, yeah, a thousand's a lot different than eighteen hundred.
Yeah, I was thinking.
We're on the same page now.
Go.
Okay, Jim, if you got it, otherwise, if you're good?
Yeah.
Perfect. All right, and we'll scoop back up to fourteen. Brent, why don't you go ahead on that one?
I'm just going to introduce Wendy Van Dyne and Dylan Brown, both are from Stantec. I believe Wendy was going to or talk about the project, but if you have questions more on the engineering side, probably, I'm assuming she'll probably dump it on Dylan. That's what I would do. But anyways. We, we have been working with Stantec to get a revised timeline. Obviously, we wanted to get the comp plan to make sure it's a product that we're all happy with. There, Wendy will go through the timeline, just update you on where we're at, what's going on with this project, but then also talk about a challenge you've had with some information. There, there's been a lot that's happened in Horace over the past year, even since we've obtained Stantec as a consultant for the comprehensive plan. Uh, so the angle that they are going down with information, some of that has changed, which has resulted in the need to, where we'll have a need for making some adjustments to our scope and costs tied to it, so we'll get into that a little bit. But, uh, like I said, just want to introduce Wendy, and if you have any questions, feel free to ask staff. Myself and Barrett have been working with the comp plan. Uh, and then Dylan and Wendy, Wendy is project manager, Dylan is probably more in the local presence here. Uh, Wendy is on the Bismarck office from Stantec, so.
Welcome.
Well, thank you. Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. Uh, I'm Wendy Van Dyne. I replaced Joel Paulson as a project manager when he departed Stantec earlier this year. And over the past, gosh, year now, it's hard to believe, we've been working with, um, with Brent and with Russ and others here at the city on the update to the uh, comprehensive plan, which is Horace twenty forty-five. Over the course of these many months, um, we have completed most of our scope. I would say we've completed about ninety percent of our scope, which we've outlined on the second two pages of the memo, which have been included in your packet. Um, and when, you know, in, in a, in a community much like Horace that is experiencing so much development activity, oftentimes it can be difficult and challenging to approach comprehensive planning at the same time that all this development activity is happening. Um, but nonetheless, uh, we worked very diligently, uh, with Brent and others at the city, uh, with Barrett's predecessor, um, the director of community development, Matt Lauer, um, to develop the future land use map and got that approved through the planning and zoning as well as through city council in July of last year. Um, once the future land use map was approved, uh, we did, um, proceed forward with, uh, the remaining scope of work, uh, because we recognized the urgency and the need to finish this plan. And, uh, one of the items that we proceeded forward with was the development of the small area plans. Um, many of you, um, may have been aware or included in discussions early on in the planning process, uh, that occurred back in May of two thousand nineteen, where we identified where two locations for small area plans would be located as we completed the comprehensive plan. And the small, the purpose of the small area plans is to help provide greater clarity and nuance and detail into answering some of these questions that have even come up this evening. In terms of where will transportation corridors be located to help account for development activity and safety? Where will green space be located to help, um, support, um, quality of life and the needs and demands of local residents? Um, as well as what is the development character of some of these commercial areas and residential neighborhoods that will be developed? Um, basically, the small area plans serve as a guide to help make these informed decisions, both at the planning and zoning commission level, as well as at the city council level. Um, back in May, it was determined, um, my colleague Phil Carlson, who's also working closely with Dylan and I on this plan, uh, Phil Carlson is a planner out of our Minneapolis office. Uh, he was unable to be here this evening, but I'm speaking on behalf of our team. Uh, Phil worked with, um, many of you to identify where the two locations for the small area plans would be and the boundaries of the small area plans. Over the course of the months during the summertime, um, we spent a lot of time, um, requesting information from, um, local developers and from the city to get information on existing plats and existing developments that might possibly be in the works that could affect or influence the development of the small area plans. And we also spent quite a bit of time, um, collecting utility information that also impacts and influences the development of the small area plans. Uh, in August, it was determined that we had sufficient information to go ahead and move forward and finalize things, recognizing again the urgency in completing the comprehensive plan as quickly as possible. So moving forward with information and with the transition, um, from Joel to myself as project manager, and then certainly with the transition, um, uh, with Matt Lauer's departure, we did go ahead and finalize the small area plans based on the information that we had on hand at the time, and we presented, uh, the small area plans, uh, within our, our draft documents to, um, to the city, and we presented them to the SRC at our third meeting, which we held the first week in November. During our, our, uh, third SRC meeting, uh, it was determined that there were some changes or some development activity, um, that was influencing or would perhaps negate some of the recommendations that we were making in our small area plans, um, information that we weren't aware of prior to the point of, of completing these small area plans. At the time, we also received some additional feedback from the city, um, some suggested changes. Um, at that point in time, Barrett had joined the city, and so we had an opportunity to bring him into the process to help evaluate the draft that had been assembled, and was, and we received a number of comments, uh, from the city, from Brent and from Barrett, that we are in the process and we agreed, uh, should certainly be addressed. Um, through the course of conversations, it has come to our awareness that, um, or brought, been brought to our attention that many of the preliminary plats and final plats that have been considered, uh, one of which, um, we just got done discussing earlier this evening, Lakeview Heights Third Edition, certainly have considerations that we weren't aware of when we assembled the small area plans that take note and provide recommendations for how development should occur at the seventeen and seventy-sixth, uh, intersection as well as in the Old Town area. So essentially, we're at the point today where we would like to proceed forward in wrapping up the plan as quickly as possible. However, the information that we had on hand at the time when we developed the small area plans, we feel, um, no longer reflects the activity that is currently going on in Horace. Uh, more than anything, what we want to provide Horace at the end of this comprehensive planning process is a plan that is relevant, that speaks to the ongoing needs and development activity here within the city, and one that, um, can serve as a guide for future development as some of these questions come up in the future. Um, so the request that we come to you with this evening is, um, a request to, um, allow us to uh, provide an addendum, uh, to our existing contract to help reconsider some of these additional planning, uh, projects and development projects that are impacting our small area plans, so that we can deliver a plan, um, continue on and, and finalize the plan as quickly as possible, but take into consideration some of the development activity and recommendations, and provide specific transportation recommendations that will be relevant towards the activity that's going on today.
So where would you see the, okay, the seventeen and seventy-sixth corridor area, is there other, where's the other small?
Yeah, what's this Old Town small area?
Yeah.
The Old Town small area plan is, um, located, um, near where the, um, the grain elevator is currently located, just off of the seventeenth, uh, avenue, County, yeah, seventeen, County Road seventeen corridor.
Are those the only two, or are we looking at some other?
Those are the only two small area plans that were within the comprehensive planning process.
Some of the work did flow down and to, um, like the whole south of the school, kind of, it kind of all flowed together essentially. Some of the work did flow down and to, um, like the whole south of the school, kinda, it kinda all flowed together essentially.
So, I asked Barrett to bring up the map real quick, just to see what we're talking about, the old town area is right here, but this area goes up. Kinda goes like that. So, it does, it does have some green field development and some redevelopment, and then if you go up there.
Okay, so that's, cause I was gonna say what's changed about the small town, but you're stating because of the purchase of the DIs.
Yeah, cause, uh, that greenfield development there, and then if you go, the, can you highlight the Norman one here? Is it, is really this kinda cost everybody at school, is it? No, it's north side of.
So, the other part here would be pretty much on this. Are we talking like the whole, like the roundabout in that square, just the small squares around it there, or are we just talking the southeast sector?
Generally, this area here.
If I remember correctly, Wendy has it in front.
I do, and I have an, an additional exhibit, um, a draft of our small area plans that I can share with you if you'd like to take.
We'll just, I wanna make sure we're all on the right same page here when we're talking about this area.
I was gonna say, I don't understand the, the change in the old town, what it is.
So, we have, we have a unique op, or we have a, I'd like to call it a unique opportunity where we have really two focus areas, like almost two. Kinda downtown feels, the one to the south, the old town area, that's gonna be piggybacking off of what we already have redevelopment there and then creating new. So, we have a combination of redevelopment and greenfield, which you don't see very often, and then we really have up along seventy-six, that area. Is a neighborhood plan where you almost build it from scratch, pretty much everything's from scratch. So, it's, it's a unique opportunity, cause not many places get to do it from scratch. Redevelopment or development of a neighborhood.
To do a comprehensive plan for the city of Horace. Before we first talked about it, we would have had to totally shut down development everywhere to get it done right the first time. You know, so we've had, like you said, ongoing stuff happening and it's, it's challenging.
Well, that's the problem, is that with things moving as quickly as they are, who's gonna say in another year that we need, you know, another, and then why is that gonna be different?